I'll call the City of Milton Common Council Meeting Tuesday, November 14th, 2017 to order at 6:00.
O'Clock.
P.M. And can I get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Pigly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Thank you, and you have an agenda in front of you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries and we have an agenda. Pledge of Allegiance. Do you hear me?
The allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ryan's next. Ryan Reed on the 28th. Oh, great. That's perfect.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
Well, we'll just have an agenda.
All those in favor? Mel Mark's not here. It's Wild West all of a sudden.
Item number four, approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll second it.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor? Those opposed? The motion carries. Alright, what we've all been waiting for for months.
For months. Okay.
Item number five.
So what I will do is I'm gonna give just a quick, I'll say quick, presentation regarding the budget. And if folks recall, back on October 17th of this year, we provided a similar presentation that showed the preliminary budget at that time. And that had a handful of assumptions in it based on information that we had not received from the state yet. The good news is, is that we have all of that information now today, and that's included in this presentation and was included in your packets that were mailed out on Friday of last week. So this is an updated version of the budget. In addition to updating that budget that was presented on the 17th, we also discussed at our meeting last week the possibility of looking at options, really two different budgets. There's the budget that was basically the budget that was presented on October 17th. And then there is an alternative budget, which we're calling Budget B as opposed to Budget A, that shows what would happen or what the budget would look like if we were to levy to the cap that's allowed by the state. And that piece has changed. If you remember from the meeting last week, we, the budget that we prepared on October 17th estimated expenditure restraint to be at 1.9%. But we found out shortly, probably about two weeks after that, maybe three weeks after that, that that number is actually at 3%. So that's good news in terms of the budget. That means that we had tremendous growth in the community and that our expenditure restraint number mirrored that growth. So we're able to, the expenditure restraint cap went up, which means we're able to levy more dollars if the council so chooses. So we'll go through a couple of slides here, and some of these may look familiar. And I'll point out the areas where it has been updated since the 17th, just so everybody kind of understands. But as always, we start with, these are the five goals that we as staff kind of use in order to start with that base budget. We want a balanced budget, one that stays within levy limits. We want to qualify for expenditure restraint. We want no reductions in service, and we want no new borrowing. And those, at times, are very lofty goals. This year, however, we were able to do so because of the growth that we had. It made it easier to kind of meet some of those, check some of those boxes. Taking just a quick look back, in 2016, the adopted budget had general fund expenditures of 2.6 million. In 2017, so the budget that we're currently operating in, had general fund expenditures of 4.7 million, which was an increase of about 1.3%. So general fund expenditures increased 1.3% in the budget that we're in, which is a very small number. And then at the bottom, it shows the tax rate from 2016 to 2017. Now, to compare it to what we presented, what we're presenting this evening, 2018 Preliminary A, which is the budget that you saw on October 17th, shows an increase in general fund expenditures of about 1.22%, so even less than what we increased last year. So again, that is a rather small number considering the size of the budget and what we're able to accomplish with that. But again, that's preliminary budget A, so that's what we saw on the 17th of October. Contributing factors to the 2018 budget construction, city's growth. The city saw substantial growth in 2016, 2017 with a net new construction increase of 1.43%. That actually constituted the second highest in Rock County. That overall, how that helps us is it positively impacts the tax rate. Expenditure restraint, in order to qualify for the estimated $122,000 in state aid in 2019, the budget cannot increase expenditures by more than $115,000. If you may remember, back on the 17th, again, we estimated that number to be, we estimated the expenditure restraint number to be 1.9. So that number was actually more like 73,000, and now it's 115. And of course, there's the affordability, which is the subjective piece of the budget, but it is one that is nevertheless, it's equally as important, in my opinion, as those other two. Developing a budget that maintains services at an affordable, as affordable as possible. And that's that can versus should question. Can we do something? Yes. But should we do it? That's a different question, and that's kind of where the tough decisions are made. As I talked about before, the city realized an overall increase in $27 million in equalized value last year. That is a very, very, very large number, one of the largest numbers we've seen in at least a decade. Levy limits are based on that number, are based on net new construction, and that number is a direct result of that. Net new construction is new value that was created in the community. So the 27 million wasn't all new value, that's increased value, but the net new construction number, Dan, was, what was it, 5 million, 6 million?
It's done as 1.43%.
Yeah.
I don't remember the number.
But it was between 5 and 6.
I think it was.
Not below 5.
Yeah.
I'll look it up.
We'll get back to that. Levy limits provide a cap in the amount that a town, village, or city and county may implement a property tax levy on parcels within their boundaries. And again, remember levy is how much tax dollars are collected by the city. And for all intents and purposes, that's actually the only thing that the council and the city can affect is the levy. Tax rate is somewhat out of our control because it's a product of a number of different variables. In this, in these two budgets that we'll present, Budget A is about $30,000 below that levy limit. Budget B is levied at the limit of 3.236353. So Budget B would levy to the cap that is allowed by the state. Budget A would be about 30,000 less than. And again, Budget A is what we saw on October 17th, basically. The other piece of the equation, expenditure restraint. Expenditure restraint is a different cap imposed by the state. Levy limits are a cap imposed on how much tax dollars you can collect. Expenditure restraint is a cap set by the state on how much money you can spend. A lot of times, more often than not, those two numbers are at different levels. One's above the other one or below the other one. What we have seen in the City of Milton is the last, in the last two years, is that the expenditure restraint cap has actually been lower than the levy limit cap. So last year, we didn't levy to the cap. We left about $70,000 on the table. The year before that, we did not levy to the cap. We left about $16,000 on the table. If we are to adopt Budget A, we'd leave about $30,000 on the table, so trying to just put that in context. The reason expenditure restraint is important is the state incentivizes you to stay below that cap. And they incentivize you through a state aid bonus. This year's bonus was about $115,000, and we're estimating next year's bonus to be about $122,000. So if we were to violate expenditure restraint in the 2018 budget, we would not qualify for that state aid bonus in 2019. So we would start right out of the gates on the 2019 budget construct, about $122,000 in the hole.
And what determines the expenditure restraint?
The state.
So not how much we levy and not how much we spend the year before?
There is a, that's a factor of the expenditure restraint. How much you levy is a variable within the construction of the expenditure restraint. But it is not the only piece. What causes that expenditure restraint to go up is net new construction, similar to levy limits or increased value.
And inflation.
And inflation.
Inflation was significantly higher this year.
Correct. There's no penalty for violating, and that's a very, you know, it's probably an overly dramatic word. But to exceed, we'll say exceed the expenditure restraint cap, there's no penalty to do so. If you exceed levy limits, there's a penalty. You're in trouble. Expenditure restraint?
Yes.
Every year, less and less communities qualify for expenditure restraint. That's why that bonus continues to increase on a year-to-year basis. It is. For every community that continues to qualify for it, every time somebody drops off, it just means that their bonus grows up on a prorated basis. Yeah. So the state makes available a pool of funds, and every year, that pool of funds is divided by a number or a denominator that continues to shrink, at least for now. Maybe someday that number will go back up, you know? But the trend has been that that number continues to decrease because less and less communities are able to meet that expenditure restraint and still function.
Meaning they're picking up all their, they're paying for everything they need.
Right.
Versus making tough choices.
That might be one reason, yeah. I don't want to put words in anybody else's mouth.
I would say that every municipality is making tough choices, and sometimes they just don't want to maybe cut their safety services and they'll go over expenditure restraint like that.
Remember, remember what I said, is those two numbers are often on different levels. And let's say, so last year, we did not levy to the cap because the expenditure restraint prevented us to doing so. So we left $70,000 on the table in order to get a $115,000 bonus. At some point, if that trend were continue, to continue, at some point, the amount we would leave on the table would be much greater than the amount we would receive in bonus. So it would be, so at that point, the communities say, hey, it's not worth it to get this bonus anymore if I'm gonna leave, you know, let's say our bonus is 115, but we're leaving $200,000 on the table. At some point, many communities are forced in that position, and they say, well, yeah, I really want that state aid bonus, but I can get more than that if I just levy for it. So that too is a tough choice that communities have to make. And in the event, and I don't want to go too far out into the left field here, but in the event that a community goes for an operational referendum, they automatically violate expenditure restraints, just right out of the gates. So, because at that point, they're saying, hey, we want more than our levy limit. So they violated the expenditure restraint, or they've exceeded the expenditure restraint, and they've asked the taxpayers, can we exceed our levy limit as well? So at that point, then, those communities, again, are not eligible for expenditure restraint. They exceed their levy by permission of the taxpayers. And then what happens is the next year, whatever their new levy is, that becomes their new base. And they may qualify again at that point, so. So it's looked at on an annual basis. I probably said a lot of this stuff already, but to qualify for our 2019 expenditure restraint payment, both must apply. The city must not exceed its expenditure restraint, and we must have a bill rate over 5, which we do. Again, all 2018 budgeted expenditures, except debt service, can only, can increase by no more than 3%. So back on October 17th, we estimated that number to be 1.9%. So we estimated that we could not, we could not increase our expenses less debt service by 73,000. We now know for certain that that number is 3%, which equals approximately 115,000. So with that being said, now Budget A that we saw on October 17th qualifies for expenditure restraint. You might recall, before, on October 17th, we were looking at about a $9,000 cut. That's no longer necessary, if the council so chooses, to fully fund the nonprofits and look at that budget as we saw on the 17th. Budget B, which is the budget that we constructed that does levy to the state imposed cap, also qualifies for expenditure restraints. Either one, we're good with expenditure restraint. So this is the 2018 Budget A construction. This is roughly what the team saw on October 17th. There's been some minor changes based on health insurance participation, but other than that, this is roughly the same. Non-property tax revenue increase, which is actually a decrease. Employee relations went up 67,000, operational changes went up 12,000, and nonprofit requests went up 5,400. That shows a preliminary 2018 tax levy of 3.2 million dollars, and then we're gonna break each one of those down. Nonproperty tax revenue increase. So that is expenditure restraint aid, interest earnings, payment in lieu of taxes, licensing and permits, shared revenue, and estimated highway aid. That's what makes up that number. So we saw an increase in our expenditure restraint aid payment, which we talked about a couple of slides ago. We saw an increase in our interest earnings. We saw an increase in our payment in lieu of taxes. And then we have just a minor increase in some other areas that equal about $1,100. We're estimating licensing and permits are gonna go up about $200. Shared revenue went down. State highway aid went down. So despite the fact that the governor passed a budget with a 15% increase in transportation aids, we still saw a decrease in Milton. So what that means is, had he not passed the budget with a 15% increase, we would have seen a greater decrease. So we appreciate that. Thank you for not having us lose, you know, $50,000. But we still lost $4,000 in state aid in terms of transportation aid.
How much do we get in total for you?
Do you know, Dan?
The net new construction was 5.1 million.
Good thing we're not doing this live.
Highway aid is 325,000.
So that 325,000 is $4,000 less than it was last year. Employee relations, basically none of the numbers have changed on this since we saw it last time, other than a slight change in contingency. A 3% parcel wage increase, 8% increase in health insurance, that's the city's contribution to health insurance. Health insurance costs went up 8%. The city's portion of that is 14,000. The employees take on the other portion of that. We're increasing the buyout from $200 to $300 a month in order to kind of meet that increasing cost of health insurance and continue to incentivize, frankly, people to choose other health insurances. You know, as callous as that may sound, it's the way of the world right now. Re-allocation of DPW's time, we do this every year. We look back at about a three-year average of where our DPW workers are actually working, where they're actually spending their time. Because remember, not, so what we're looking at here is simply general fund. So every year, we kind of do an evaluation of where folks spending their time, and what we've seen is that there's been an increased amount of activity in general fund activities as opposed to stormwater, water, and wastewater. So that's what that means. 1.5% increase for police union contract, that's per their contract. Level funding police wages. We've had a lot of changes and undulations in the police department over the last two years, really. And this level funds the police wages, so there's not big spikes as folks move up through the union ladder. And then our decrease in contingency of $35,000. And that was, that was simply to, again, to balance the budget. Operational changes, it's probably easier for you to look on your computer than try to read that up there, but I'm gonna do my best. Fire department increased 18,000. That was the budget that was approved by the fire commission. Law enforcement, equipment and operations, there are new equipment being purchased. Redoing the, new pistols, new radios. Elections, we're gonna have four elections in, hopefully only four. In, well, I guess, I guess we can't have a special election in 2019, or 2018. So four elections in 2018 as opposed to the one we had this year, or two that we had this year. Our legal increase based on the contract that we signed last year. Capital expenditures increased about $5,196. And again, these are increases over the 17 budget. Other miscellaneous increases and decreases, that's where kind of everything else gets lumped in. You know, minor changes to supplies, minor changes here, $50 here, $100 there. It quits to about 9,900. Increased water rates for the splash park. I know we talked about this on the 17th, so I apologize for repeating myself, but I think it's probably worth it. You know, we had a rate increase in the city charges itself for the water that it uses. That's by law, we have to do that. Increase in the mayor council training budget of $2,100, and that's just to match basically what the practice has been. This year, I think the budget was 2,400, and it was, and it was far exceeded, so we wanted to kind of match that up with reality. City garage utilities and equipment maintenance decreased slightly. Assessor's contract decreases fairly substantially based on the contract that we signed with them. That tiers down. And then retiree and OPEB funding decreased because we had somebody off of our, finish up on their, they're no longer covered by us. I'm normally a little bit more articulate than this, yes. Grant is sick, so I'll blame him. Nonprofit requests. Historical society requested 10,000 last year, requested 10,000 again this year, so that is not an increase. YMCA scholarships requested 2,000 last year but were not funded, so their request of 1,200 this year constitutes a $1,200 increase. The gathering place requested 10,000 last year but received 5,898 something or other. So they requested 10,000 again this year, so that's what constitutes the $4,202 increase. Capital requests, this hasn't changed since what we saw on the 17th. Purchase of a new squad car or 1.5 squad cars, the tool cat, including trade-in, brush chopper, pavement roller, tree replacement, water heater replacement at the DPW garage, rolling stock savings, weapons replacement, and zero-turn lawnmower. So this constitutes about a $4,000 increase over what was funded in capital last year. Go ahead. Yep.
Is that the new building?
Yes.
We're already replacing the water heater in our new DPW?
Unfortunately, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
What do we use the hot water on?
It's used for the car wash and all of the different areas, and we have to have tempered water for the eye wash, the safety, and then the bathrooms. But it was just, the building was contracted out, it was just a bad piece of equipment. The rest of everything else down there is not really anything you'd anticipate replacing for being new. The water heater just, it just was a bad, a bad buy by the contractor, and it's out of warranty, so you're just stuck replacing it.
So it lasted 10 years?
Okay.
No, it's only about four years old. It's only about four years old. It's just a piece of equipment that you just, it's just what happened with the, as part of the whole project.
Okay, thank you.
So some pending requests in this, we discussed this, you know, a little bit last week. What are some outstanding capital items that we know we will eventually need sooner rather than later on some of these? Parks mower, snowplow lease, sidewalk repairs and installation, library parking lot, go ahead.
I mean, it's not like we're not spending any money on sidewalks, right?
Right. What we have, what we have is an assessment fund, and that's how we, that's how we fund our sidewalk repairs and in like sidewalk gap installations. Eventually, that money will disappear though. It is not a recycled fund. It is, there's a pot of money there, and it shrinks every year. So there's not a, there's not a sustainable funding source for that.
We have lots of sidewalks that are in need of repair, because if anybody wants to borrow my chair, go down some.
And these, we, we fully fund the sidewalk repairs. We don't assess those to homeowners, for the most part.
If it's a new lot after 1996, then they pay for their own sidewalk.
New installation.
New installation.
But not repairs.
Replacement and repairs the city pays for. The general fund does.
So in this budget, how much did we have dedicated for sidewalk repairs, Dan?
We've historically just taken, we've budgeted 25,000. Whether we use it all, because we break the city up in quadrants and replace what's necessary, but I think this past year, we spent 12 or 13.
So the library parking lot, and that's the one behind the building. I want to make sure people understand that. If you've been back there, it's in rough shape. We need to repaint the splash pad, and that takes a very special type of paint when you consider how much water and traffic and making sure little kids aren't slipping and stuff on it. That needs to be repainted about every three to five years, depending on usage and sunlight and things like that, so. The Highway 59 turn signals, it's been probably one of the most common requests, I can easily say that, since I've been here, is can we please put a turn signal at the Highway 59 and Janesville Street intersection? So we've looked into it, and that's what the cost would be, believe it or not. Yeah, flashing yellow turn signal.
Yeah.
Yeah. Seal coat the cemetery and Cross Ridge Park, $7,000. The Liberty Park fence, if you've ever noticed, there's portions of that fence that are in pretty rough shape. And then a commercial carpet cleaner for our buildings, here, library, other places that are carpeted. So one thing that I will say about this list is, this list is, it is not finite. And what I mean when I say that is, we never know necessarily when a piece of equipment is gonna, is gonna, you know, break like a water heater, like a four-year-old water heater. So this, this list is basically a snapshot of what we know we need today. A month from now, this list may look slightly different, but we know that these, we know that these items are not gonna go away. It's likely gonna be added to. But with that being said, there are items on this list that could be funded potentially in part or in total through alternative funding sources. If we were to choose to fund the Highway 59 turn signal with TIF dollars, we could. If we were to fund the Liberty Park fencing with TIF dollars, we could. Parks and Recreation, I'm not, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but they could fund Liberty Park fencing. They could pay for a portion of the splash pad. So there are potential alternative funding sources for some of these items, but for other ones, there absolutely is not. It's just general fund dollars. Parks mower, snowplow, you know, those things are what they are, so.
So it could be donations, some of those could be donated through nonprofits and whatever.
Could, if, yeah, if somebody, yeah. Yeah, like something like a, and something small like the commercial carpet cleaner, that likely could and will be purchased with, you know, if there ends up being a small surplus at the end of the year. Or if we sell another piece of equipment, similar to what we did with the barricade trailer this year. We were able to fund that through basically two alternate funding sources. We applied for a grant, and we realized greater revenues from a sale of an existing piece of equipment. And those two pieces together, we're able to fund that. So we look at, this list is kind of always in the back of our mind, sometimes it's in the front of our mind. So we're always looking for ways to take items off of this list, to satisfy items on this list. But some of those larger scale things, you know, the snowplow lease, $35,000, that's just one, that's one year's payment. That whole vehicle is probably closer to $160,000. So to find an alternative funding source for that is not easy, so that's something that we really do need to plan for. So with that all in mind, we go back and revisit our goals. The budget is balanced, it stays within levy limits, it does qualify for expenditure restraint now with the new ERP number. There are no reductions in service, and in this budget, there is no new borrowing. Few takeaways, this budget represents a continuation of services from previous years. There are no staff reductions or no service reductions. This budget can fully fund all nonprofit requests. This budget has no new borrowing component, but it's, as always, we want to put that caveat on it. Currently, 26.7 cents of every dollar collected by the city goes to pay for debt service. Currently, $0.267 of every dollar collected by the city goes to pay for debt service. What does this all mean? In the city's 2018 preliminary budget, Budget A, which was the one similarly presented on October 17th, would not levy to the state-allowed cap. Budget B would. The city can only increase expenditures by $115,000 in order to qualify for ERP, and Budget A and Budget B both qualify for the ERP. What will the impact be in the city's 2018 preliminary budget? Budget A, which is again the one we saw on the 17th, represents an approximate increase of about 1.73% in the tax rate. Budget B represents about a 2.64% increase in the tax rate. So we'll look at Budget A and Budget B, and then we can really break those down, because I'm almost done with my presentation. Budget A, again, is levies below the state-allowed cap. It qualifies for expenditure restraint. It has a tax rate of $10.01. The unused levy capacity will be reduced in future legislative adjustments in order to create the levy calculations. So in other terms, those dollars are use it or lose it. So that question has been asked by a number of council members and folks in the public, and even some folks on the MAC board. Well, what happens if you don't levy to the state-imposed levy cap? Some of those dollars will go away. It's not... they don't carry over on an annual basis. You can't just build up a big pile and then in one year say, "All right, we're going to levy an additional $1 million."
Yeah, like last year, we left $70,000 on the table, and we were able to use 40 of that this year.
Yeah.
So I would imagine next year's calculation would be something similar.
Right.
But I don't know what that calculation is.
And any unused ERP capacity will not carry over as well. So that is truly a use it or lose it, whereas the levy limit is use it or risk losing a portion of it, really, is kind of... if you want to add more words to the slide.
But if we have use for it, then it's not going to be wasted.
Right. 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 Yes.
The $70,000 left on the table last year...
Yep.
Would have still kept us under expenditure restraint?
Nope.
Okay. How much did we leave on the table that would have accommodated that?
$70,000.
For expenditure restraint or...
We levied up to the expenditure restraint.
Right. But you're saying we left $70,000, we could have levied additionally?
Yes.
But not qualifying for expenditure restraint?
Correct. We would have exceeded the expenditure restraint cap.
So we couldn't have levied a dollar more than what we did last year?
Well, we could have if we chose not to qualify for expenditure restraint.
Okay, so while qualifying, did we leave any money on the table? Do you see what I'm saying here, or no? Dan?
We did not leave any money on the table in order to qualify for expenditure restraint. We levied up to the maximum we could to qualify for expenditure restraint.
Right.
So that $70,000 was left on the table in terms of the levy limit, but not expenditure restraint. We met that right down to the last dollar.
Yeah.
I left nothing.
So had we levied for the $70,000, we wouldn't have had the $115 to start?
Correct. Yep. Yep. So Budget B levies to the state-allowed cap of $3.2 million, which is about $30,000 more than what Budget A is. It does qualify for expenditure restraint. The tax rate goes from 1001 to 1010 and represents about a 2.64% increase over this year's tax rate. And future levies and ERP calculations will have the increased base to include it in their subsequent legislative adjustments. So what that means, it's a lot of words to basically say, the state will recognize the fact that we levied to that amount and will not penalize us for doing so.
And that... Tim, that nine cent change?
Yes.
Comes to an $100,000 home?
So here is a piece of information that we just added today, and the reason we added it today is because we just got this information today. And the piece that we just got today is the Rock County portion of this tax bill. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thanks, too.
Supervisor Zajak. So what this is showing, what these next... basically what these next two slides will show is this is what folks will see on their tax bill. If you live in the city of Milton, and we were to adopt Budget A, this is what you will see. The only piece that's still unknown is the school credit at the bottom there. See, it says "school credit estimated." But that is such a very small portion of the budget that even if it goes up or down, you know, $50,000, it really doesn't move the needle in any kind of substantive way. So Rock County's tax rate went up 5.59%.
They're levy.
Or levy, I'm sorry, levy. Rock County's levy went up 5.59%. Budget A for the council to consider on the 28th, and again, that's the one that we saw on October 17th, constitutes about a 2.14% increase on the levy. The school district's levy went down 1417%. Black Hawk Tech went up about 8%. So what that shows is an overall increase in... on the levy of 1.84%. So when you combine all of those together, the levy in the... for City of Milton taxpayers, if the council was to just... let's say we were going to adopt Budget A tonight, which we can't, would go up 1.84%. If we were to do Budget B, so it probably can't see it up there, but I clicked next. So the difference is Budget B... or Budget A is a 2.14% increase in the levy. Budget B is a 3.12% increase in the levy, so less than a percent increase in the levy from A to B, and that changes the overall levy to 2.23%. So what will folks really be interested in when they get their tax bills on December 6th or shortly thereafter? It's the tax rate. So the county's tax rate increased 5.15%. Budget A for the city constitutes a 1.73% increase on the tax rate. The school district's tax rate decreased six tenths of a percent, and Black Hawk Tech went up 7.74% on the tax rate. So again, if the city... let's just pretend hypothetically, the city was to adopt Budget A tonight, and we all went on our merry way, the residents of the city of Milton would see an increase of 1.4% on their tax bill. That's Budget A. Oh, good timing. Budget B... Budget... so Budget A would be a 1.4% increase on their tax bill. Budget B would be a 1.75% increase on their tax bill. So if... yeah, hypothetical situation, if the council was to adopt Budget B tonight, the tax bill for a City of Milton resident would increase by 1.75%.
Could I ask a hypothetical question? You may not know the answer. But you've got quite a few projects pending, construction projects under development, new businesses talking to us. Do we have a sense of... we may not. But do we have a sense of...
What that might look like next year come budget time? It's very hard to... so I think there's two questions that you're asking there. You know, what is... what does the horizon look like for projects that are currently, let's say, pending? And I would say, you know, some of them look very good, some of them look, you know, maybe pipe dreams. But, you know, projects like Diamond Assets, for example, we know they're building it right now, and the tax rate that... the assessed value of that project on 1118 is going to be considerably lower than the tax rate, than the assessed value of that property on 1119, because it'll be under partial construction on 1118. So just that project alone will constitute, you know, a substantial increase.
And that's not in a TIF.
It is in a TIF.
It is in a TIF. So there is that.
But there's, you know, Nick Rogers's project, you know, the value of Charter NEX on 1117 is going to be considerably less than its value on 1118, because they completed a large project. Handy Art completed a large project this year. Michael Lucas's project is underway. Red Hawk Farms will hopefully start this year. And then there are other projects that haven't kind of come to the finish line yet, but I think it's safe to say that we'll have additional projects in 2018. So that's the first question. What does that mean to the tax rate? Every time the value increases, it generally has a positive impact on the tax rate, but it's not the only variable that affects tax rate. And I can use this as an example. So last year, so the budget that we're currently operating under, we collected less tax dollars in 2017 than we did in 2016. So the city actually took in less money, and the tax rate went up 3.14%. This year, we're looking at increasing the amount of tax dollars, and yet our tax rate's only going to go up 1.74%. So that's why it's really hard to answer the second... that second question with any great degree of certainty, because it depends on net new construction, it depends on the assessment ratio, and it depends on their overall equalized value, tid in versus tid out.
Did we experience that assessing error in last year's budget vote?
In our valuation, yes.
Did that do... did that do the required tax rate?
Did that have an impact on the tax rate?
I remember it was kind of like a double...
Yeah.
They talked about it.
Because they... well, they... so there was an overtaxation two years ago, so then in order to correct it, the state adjusted it, which means that they doubled down on that correction in order to make up for it. So we're through that now.
Yeah, this... for calculating tax rate, we do not include the tid districts when we come up with the tax rate. The tid outnumber, which I think it's on a future slide.
No, because this is the last slide.
Oh. Oh, yeah. Sorry. The tid outnumber did not change by a significant amount, because Black Hawk Tech's campus was rented property last year, and so that came off the rolls, and that was like $7 million. But then the correction happened, so it was basically a net impact of zero or plus or minus a very small number. And the other thing we'll have next year is the revaluation, so that no matter what happens with the tax rate, what a person sees could be completely different if their assessment changed by any kind of significant amount, plus or minus, so...
Well, I have a couple things. So if you could just give me a minute, because I've tried to organize this, but...
James, we're about to present.
You should have sent us the slide to have...
Well, I didn't put it in a PowerPoint. But something to bring up first before I get to the point that I want to make. But back to, first of all, having to do with the nonprofit requests, because they do impact the choice that I would make, and the concerns that Dave had brought up before. You know, I do feel that we are not philanthropists, and our role is not to make decisions in terms of making our taxpayers donors and how to represent them. But I also feel that there's concerns by taxpayers and members of the community that there are certain things that they need that can be represented by capital expenses, like the Milton House and perhaps the Gathering Place, because those are things that we have used as a community long-term. And while much of what they do is, in terms of their operating expenses, are dealt with on fundraising projects and other ways of gaining their money, that some of their needs, like keeping their property and their buildings in use for us as a community, become a little bit our responsibility. And when I looked around at area communities, they too budgeted a certain amount within their city budgets to also take a partnership with those buildings. And I don't mean a lot of their money, but as they worked along with them, they... and I don't know what the funds would be. They were different than what we called them in the school district. There was a community fund where they could place the money to keep year after year after year and keep adding money to that fund, so that you were working toward a project. If you were... you know, if you had a living document and you were working toward a project of redoing a part of the Milton House, and you added a certain amount that was budgeted for the Milton House each year, and you would keep that in a fund, certain fund, over time.
So you're saying like if there was like some project that required like $30,000, and the council said, "We're going to allocate 510," whatever that number is, once that number hits, then you would release those funds for that project?
Correct. And even if you don't know what the end project is, you would do it annually, and over time, they would be fundraising for something, and you would get to it. But we would not release that money for operating expenses. In the same way with Gathering Place. You know, they have certain projects that they are looking forward to down the line, but we would be putting money into the... into a capital budget or a fund, and over time, then they would come to present something to us and want to gain money from that account. That's just a suggestion, because I do agree that, you know, that we are not there just to have people apply for grants.
Teresa, I'm just gonna... I'm gonna let you finish, but then after you get done, I'm going to open the public hearing, and then everybody else will have to wait till the public hearing, so, okay?
Is this okay? I just have one more.
Yeah, just go ahead. I just can't... I cannot have a public hearing.
Oh, I didn't even know that was done. That's okay. See, I didn't read the agenda.
All right.
Mark's not here.
Man, this is why we're going to increase our budget for Mark. No, it's completely fine.
I'll wait.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure that we actually open the public hearing.
No, I didn't.
It's okay. Here. Sorry. You're fine. So the public hearing is now open for anyone that would like to comment on the budget. We should take Collins. Like, next year, we'll do Collins.
Call her five, you're on the air.
Yeah. Last stand-up broadcast. I think that's a great idea. Okay. Put that on the next agenda item, how to contribute. Yeah. So, okay. So anybody want to speak? The public hearing is open.
Well, I... I'm working in case any questions came up. I know that seems to happen a lot.
Okay.
Mike Pierce said he wanted to say something.
Oh, okay. Is there a Mike Pierce in the house? Okay, all right.
Becky?
I'm gonna close.
Oh, you make me shut up. I'm right back.
That's awesome.
Okay.
That concludes the legal portion of this.
Any other questions or comments? The public hearing? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing now, and I want to thank the audience for their participation, especially the sign language was great. And now, we're going to get back to the city council's discussion, direction, and possible action comments, and we will turn it over to Teresa.
Okay. The last part of what I was saying. As part of what I was saying, that they could contribute over time, brings me back to the last point, in that overtime is significant not only for community projects. I do think that they're significant for the city projects. When I look at your lists of current capital expenditures as well as pending... When I look at your lists of current capital expenditures as well as pending, I do think that we need to, as a council, look at them and see those lists much like we see, okay, what did you purchase in 2016? What did you purchase or have you so far purchased in 2017? And what do you already have on the budget for 2018? And what's hanging out there that you want? So that we can see over time and start placing it in when that money appears. And, I mean, I need to see it so that you, rather than just coming into a meeting, you say, "Okay, we found $25,000, we can get this." But somehow, see it visually and so that we can be at a meeting and say, "You know, maybe we could do this instead of that." I mean, not that we're making decisions for you, I don't mean that, but we would like to creatively find the money as well.
So, I mean, so does anybody else have comments? Just to keep this going so we can follow it easier on the capital request part of the budget?
I do. Go ahead, Dave. I'll pass to you.
I guess to start with, I know we're not making a decision right now. Budget B appeals to me because of the increased levy provides an increased base for legislative adjustments later on. Now that said, we're talking about the nonprofit.
Actually, Dave, I just wanted to focus right now our talk on capital requests.
I'm getting to that.
Okay, all right.
I'm looking at that based on, against the list of unfunded capital requests. This process has got to start looking at harder, like Teresa was saying, we've got to start looking at this list harder. It's gotta be prioritized, what do we absolutely need right now? What do we need after the first year? What do we need by July 1st, whatever? And that's got, those decisions based on need have to be made without any regard to nonprofit funding or anything else. Now, this profit B, our budget B gives us $30,000 more dollars. And that could be put towards some of those projects. You've got $21,000 sitting there in the nonprofit funding that could be put towards some of those projects. And to me, to proceed with any budget that does not even look at these funding projects and yet holds $21,000 in a pocket out here somewhere for the nonprofit is irresponsible. Because these needs, whether it's next year or the year after, are gonna come back and bite this city and bite it hard. We've got to start looking at it. We've got to start addressing them.
So Dave, are you saying that we haven't been addressing our capital projects in the past few budgets, the past few years? Or you think that we're just not addressing, putting enough money towards the capital projects each year?
Last year, we left, what, $130,000 worth of projects on the table. Have a couple of small ones during the year with excess funds that we had. But we did that because we had to leave money on the table for the nonprofits. That should not, that decision for nonprofit funding should not even be discussed until we've taken care of as many projects as we can. Like I've said before, our legitimate responsibility is to fund the government of the city. They are not part of the government of the city. We've got to realize that.
So, one of the things that I just, because I don't remember from last year off of our capital requests from 2017, I was looking at the list of 2018 capital requests. And so I was asking Al if he could comment on our 2018 capital request, what ones are from 2017 and what ones will always be on that?
So I think the question is, we had a similar list to, and what we're talking about is, I need to get rid of all those animations. It looks great when you're going forwards. So what we're talking about is, there's a 2018 capital requests that's included in the budget. And I think the question is, what items on this 2018 capital request inclusions were items that were on the 2017 exclusions? Items that were not funded in the 2017 budget that are now being funded in the 2018 budget? And my recollection, and Howie can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe Tool Cat, Brush Chipper, and Zero Turn were items that were on last year's unfunded list that are now funded this year. The squad car, the one and a half squad cars will be on this list probably forever. They'll just be on it every year. But to the mayor's point, and I think today's point is, yeah, there was a lot of items that didn't make the cut last year. And so now, some of those items have been bumped up to this year because we're able to fund them. Some new items appeared because of necessity, like the water heater and the weapons replacement. But a lot of these items came over from last year's list, yeah.
And so I guess part of my comment is, sometimes we don't fund something because something else had to be funded. So it's not always because we didn't spend enough money on capital requests. And I'm not saying we should or we shouldn't, but I want to make sure that we're not leading people to believe that some items came off the list because there wasn't enough money. Some items came off the list because some other things had to be funded. And that's just kind of how it's always going to be. I mean, it's always gonna be, you know, we had to redo something with the furnaces in this building, right?
Last year that was.
Last year, we did that, and that wasn't, you know. So there has to be a level of flexibility. And if we can push stuff back because something else comes up, that's good to have that flexibility. But it also means that we're not reducing city services by not funding every capital request. I mean, we don't always get everything that we want, so.
The only other thing I'll say that is, when we go to make this budget in 2019, this list, this 2018 pending requests is where we will start the discussion for capital next year. So I think to Teresa's point, I think what you're asking for is, can we show kind of, you know, what did we do the last three years? And then what are we looking at for the next three years? Yeah, yeah. So you're looking for like a capital improvement program?
So one of the things that Rock County does, and I am sure all of our department heads would really be excited about this and enthused, is they actually fill out paperwork for all of their capital requests. And they talk about why this capital request is important, why it's a need, how does it fulfill the mission of their department? And it's a one-page form. And it gives more definition. I mean, Howie's like, "Oh, this is lovely."
Howie already has that for his department, yeah.
We've done that before. It's nothing extraordinary.
So. But that's something that really, the council doesn't have, hasn't been looking at. And I'm not speaking for you, saying that that's something you even want to look at. But if you want to have a bigger picture, a greater understanding of how this fits in the overall budget, that's also, you know, more background information that we could look at, too.
If, I like what Alderman Rush, our older person Rush, suggested. And I like, I also can resonate to what Alderman Adams has said, too. I like that idea of the rolling, you know, seeing what the picture is three years from now, two years from now. That's important. But then I think we talked a little bit last time, but I really think it's important that we do a contingency-type funding towards those projections. Meaning, you know, otherwise, we're gonna be having this same conversation year after year. Because that capital expenditure list is gonna grow. And we have to be able to meet some of that and plan for that. For example, we have a very large piece of equipment that's gonna need replacement, right? I mean, several large pieces. In fact, tomorrow, I'm gonna go over and actually get a view of our shop and see what the equipment looks like and what do we have there. So I encourage all the council people to do that. Get over there and understand what they buy, what they already own, what they need to buy in the future. And perhaps at the police department as well, and perhaps at the library. So we all have a better picture next year of, you know, not saying we don't, but I mean, we could have a better picture next year at budget time, so. But contingency planning makes sense to me for large capital investments.
How to project your costs out. All you have to do is look at our fire department's capital purchase schedule that goes out 10 years. It's a good tool to look at, as pure luck for an example.
Do we do any borrowing for the fire department's capital request, or do we usually do cash?
In 2007, there was.
You know, if we're doing a fire truck, then we have to borrow.
So we're not, I don't think anybody on the council's advocating borrowing for capital requests and changing our policy on borrowing the next few years, right?
But what I am saying is knowing what's coming.
Right, so, and I know we talked about this a little bit last week, too. I think Jeremy and Linda brought up the idea of kind of a capital improvement program. And when I came in 2014, there was a process that had started before I came to create a capital improvement program. And I sat down, a consultant was hired, Rupert Milkie was hired, and they sat down with me and they said, "Well, this is what we've got so far. You know, where do you want us to go from here?" And I looked at it, and in year one of the capital improvement program, there was like $2.7 million worth of capital. And I said, "Well, where do we go from here?" Throw it away, because we can't even legally fund $2.7 million worth of capital in one year, let alone, could we do it and have our tax rate be affordable? So, talking with Rupert Milkie at the time, I said, "Look, you know, we can't borrow for probably five to eight years. So the idea of having an all-inclusive capital improvement program actually doesn't really make sense." So we stopped work on that, which saved us about $30,000. And what we started to do was just kind of an annual approach. So I think what you're asking for is easily accomplishable. It just, and we're fortunate in the sense that there's not a lot of capital to be purchased. You know, DPW has some pieces every year, you know, sporadically, police does. Thankfully, the library's brand new, so they won't have a whole lot of capital. And up at City Hall, we don't, you know, we don't ever really need capital. That would be of a large value. So I think it would be pretty easy to accomplish what you're talking about. You know, and we went through a similar process in Janesville that the mayor described. The difference is, you know, the county probably buys 60 vehicles a year, whereas we're buying one and a half. You know, I mean, there's just, and they've got the Department of Health, and they've got police, and they've got Public Works, and you know, they're just a much larger organization. And Janesville did that, too, but they probably borrow for their capital. Janesville does two annual borrowings, and I'm sure the county does one. We don't, we still don't have that luxury to borrow for it. So we budget about $200,000 worth of capital every year. And then, you know, we try to fit it in based on, these are the things we gotta have this year. So we put those at the top of the list, and then we look, okay, how much is left of that $200,000? All right, there's $40,000. Okay, what else fits in there? You know, here's the most we can get for $40,000. That's kind of how we do it on an annual basis. Maybe it sounds unscientific, maybe it sounds, you know, a little scatterbrained, but, you know, with the constraints that we have on the amount that we can spend and the fact that we can't borrow, our opportunities to robustly fund capital is challenged. But with that being said, we could always increase the amount that we spend on capital every year. But what that means is, because we can't borrow, or because we aren't borrowing, if we increase the amount we spend on capital, that means we're gonna have to have a reduction somewhere else. And I think, to a certain point, that's what I think what Alderman Adams is saying.
I agree with you, and I like the process that's existing, but I think we have an educational opportunity here for the public.
Just getting in on a spreadsheet.
Yeah, I agree.
Looking at it over time.
And I will say, Howie has that. And we talked about it after the council meeting last week. He's got that information. And I'm sure Scott could probably put something together very quickly, too. And for our organization, that's about it. You know, we'll ask Lisa, but, you know, that thing's still got the new car smell on it, so hopefully. Hopefully, but we're replacing a four-year-old water heater.
And I know the fire department, I know that's one of the things Chief Baker wants to look at because when they need a piece of equipment, you're talking like the cost of four plows in one year. And so, you know, there's that component, too. The last several times, we've bought equipment, we've done short-term loans, I think maybe sold land or something to pay it off shortly thereafter. In '07, we're paying for that till 2026. We took fund balance for the last item. Took $300,000 from fund balance to pay for our share with $700,000 piece of equipment, so.
You know, my point, because I'm gonna step back and say, as a taxpayer, not sitting up here, but as a taxpayer in the city, I want to know what those needs are, because then I better understand why my taxes might go up nine cents or 10 cents on the dollar.
All of your points are very well taken. And I just, Howie is, I just want to make sure folks know, I mean, Howie is on top of that. He knows that, but I think your question is, that's great, let's share it.
And actually, the Public Works Committee at one time actually was receiving logs of what each of the workers were doing as far as maintaining the equipment and all of that sort of stuff. So we've actually been, you know, we've already kind of been doing that. I think, I guess it's, for me, I'm thinking that it's a matter of, let's just ask for the information.
It went from a monthly to a quarterly to just, you know, if you just wanted it. I mean, it's still kept that way, so in case you know of a piece of equipment that's using a lot of time and justification, so it's not a, it's already, I guess, it's already in the computer and already standardized how to do it, so.
And we looked at that.
It's not something brand new to have to do.
An example of that is, we looked at that this year when the question became, do we replace the old blue squad car for the red Fusion? And, you know, Nick looked at the maintenance logs and said, "We'd never work on the blue car." So maybe that's the one we keep. I mean, that discussion is always ongoing.
And the life expectancy of those items is important, too. To know, okay, we bought it next year, how long is it gonna last, roughly?
And I think that one of the things that, I think one of the things that we might want to think about doing for these large capital projects in Public Works is the same thing that we're doing in the police department with their vehicles. You know, we budget a certain amount a year for vehicles. And I know Howie and I have talked about some of his equipment. And some of his equipment, he leases and he does a lot of creative things so that he can get what he needs through the purchases and working with different companies and such. And I think that it would actually be a good idea to do a snowplow fund or something like that. But then I'm wondering if you actually do, you know, the question, I guess, would be, is do you want to put that money into a contingency fund and use it as you need it? Or are you going to actually say, "I'm gonna put this in for the snowplow for five years down the road"?
I think, to a certain degree, I think that is the question, yeah. One thing I will say, and maybe this is just inside baseball or just, you know, in the weeds, when we say contingency, I just want to make sure folks understand, both on the council and the public, when we say contingency, contingency is really kind of an emergency fund. If we have a liability claim, if we have a lawsuit, if we have a bad storm... If we have a liability claim, if we have a lawsuit, if we have a bad storm, if we get, you know, a really terrible winter, that's generally where we attempt to, that's what, we try to hold on to contingency for that. So I, I think what you're, what, what you're saying is, is maybe like a capital fund or, or like a rolling capital replacement fund.
Like Jerry mentioned last night.
Yeah, yeah. So I just want to make sure that the vernacular is, is, is consistent there. We, in this, in this proposed budget, we reduce, reduce contingency because, because, you know, it's, it, it, we had to balance the budget, and that was something that didn't affect service. It was, it's a risk. Anytime you reduce contingency, it's a risk. You never know. You know, we had two lawsuits this year. You know, we had a handful of claims. Last year, we had a ton of claims for some reason, I don't know why. But, you know, you, you just never know what, what the year is going to bring. So that's really why we try to hold on to contingency. And every time we lower contingency, it's, it's a risk. It's a risky run. So, so I, I just wanted to kind of make that distinction. So I, I hear what you're saying, and I, and I think we're on the same page, but I just wanted to make sure folks understood that. Contingency is really emergency, and capital, a, a capital fund or a capital replacement fund is, is a similar concept, but, but would be a different, it would be a different place. One that we don't have right now. Hopefully, hopefully, yeah, hopefully.
Because we had one, and we spent it all, and it didn't continue.
Right, and that, that's the, yeah, there, there used to be a capital improvement fund, and that, that fund was drained when this building was built.
But that, that's the idea, and you would get it again now, and you drained it too much.
Yeah.
That, that item's there, and it's, it's your engine.
Sure. Yeah, no, that's a great point, great point.
But if we have it, then we can fund it, Jeremy, that's right.
Well, I mean, we're going to have the same amount of money. It's just, what, what fund are you going to put it in? It's not going to be significantly different, even if you have $30,000. It's just, what fund are you going to put it in?
Right.
Want to, just start, want to make just an observation, it's kind of a little bit of a segue. But I was looking at the agendas from, or the agendas from last year, and nine projects we didn't, or nine capital expenses we didn't pay for last year, at least is the budget process. Three of those are on the 2018 capital request as ones we want to fund. One is on the pending request. All the rest disappeared completely off this, so they must have been paid for this year. So I just want to make that as an interesting observation. Only four are even showing up on this budget to look at in the first place, out of nine. So, which is wonderful, but it also says that things they're making on the pending requests are still getting dealt with on a yearly basis. And looking at the pending requests this year, last year was all vehicles, or, you know, it was all things like DPW, things like trailers, vehicles, all things like that. This year, if you look at it, it's roads, sidewalks, things like that.
It's a different kind.
So just wanted to point out that we have all these pending requests, but they still get funded somewhere.
I mean, it's not a crisis situation.
Yeah, it's not.
If, if it was a crisis situation, it, it wouldn't be on the pending list. I will say that, yeah.
But, but a couple of years from now, it could be.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. The snowplow is a good example. The snowplow is 22 years old. We've made 24 years old, we've made substantial repairs to that. But that, that is something that could quickly jump up to the top of the list.
Do you like Jeremy's idea of creating a capital expenditure fund, so that you can then draw that to pay for your expenses on these big capital expenses?
And then I also just would like to add my comments with regard to the nonprofits' request. I just listened to Stephanie Klett talk about the billions of dollars that the state of Wisconsin gets from their tourism. Tourism has nothing to do with equipment or even filling a pothole. It's the quality of life and the things that we have in our city that bring people into our city. We have, well, with, with the Milton House and the city's history of the Milton House, all of the work that they have done on their own this year with volunteers as far as the structure, the outside of the structure, and the stable, and all of that sort of stuff. I mean, that's something that people come here to do, to go to the Milton House. We have days set aside that you can see on the website, if you look, of things that you can do to, when you come into Milton, if you want to spend the day in the Milton, these are, these are your suggested things that you do. I am 100% for supporting the nonprofit request that we have been asked for this year. I am 100% for doing that. We have a population of people that's aging. We have more people that are going into the gathering place. They're always, they're always busy. The parking lot's always full when they're open. There's, you know, I realize that not everybody goes there, but I also realize that there's people that go there who live in the city of Milton that utilize those services, and they deserve to have a place to go. They just, they just deserve to have that. Now, the questions that I raised at the municipal conference with regard to the gathering place specifically and the funding of senior centers, I got a, I got a wide variety of responses from people. I had, I had one group that said that they did not support, the city in no way funded theirs. I had some where the Cindy, one, only one. I had one where it was, it was in conjunction with the Parks and Recreation. I had one that the city actually were, it was an employer. The city, the city was the one that was managing the senior center. And then there was the one where it was a, it was a combination of both. I, I, as a city representative, I understand that my job is to make sure that we have in our city departments, the things that we need to run the city. But I also realize that it's my responsibility to keep the city going and to make it the city that people want to come to, whether they're coming here to live or they're coming here to visit for the day, or they're coming here for a wedding or a class reunion. That's part of what, that's, that is part of our city income. That's what supports our businesses, our businesses support the school. It's all just, it's all a cycle, a great big circle, where we're all just supporting each other. And I, I would never say that I'm not going to support the nonprofit request. But I would definitely like to say that I think that if we did a capital replacement fund, I think that, that, you know, if we go with B, which I am leaning towards, I think that having a capital replacement fund is a, is a very good idea. Just, but I also want to point out that there's always going to be something on that capital list. And, and it's going to change by month, may change by year. There's always going to be something there. And so I think it's important that we look at everything overall. And I really don't think that, I don't think that what our nonprofit request is asking for, I really just don't think that it's that much for what they do for the city and the people that live here.
Jeremy, did the county eliminate all of their nonprofit funding, or are they still funding some nonprofits?
Approximately, I think, four, four different nonprofits weren't funded from the original budget that we approved today. But we approved a motion to explore, explore funding those in a different way that kind of, at least acknowledges the Attorney General's opinion on, on whether or not you can donate to, use tax dollars for nonprofits. United Way and, and Health Net seem, seem to be the two of the four that would benefit from the, the new, the new program. And that's basically asking for contracted services, paying for specific line item type things in, in, in order to give them the same money to do the same thing that they were doing. And same goes for United Way. Nothing was official today, but at least we've moved the administration towards trying to accomplish that.
Do you remember what, how much the overall funding was?
Yeah, it was a prob, it was approximately $74,000, $12,000 to RVCP, RVCP, $1,200 to some neighborhood donation charity thing that kind of, I think, has been ignored for years and years and years and could have stopped a while ago. And then Health Net, $57,000 for the services they provide, and $4,000 was to United Way.
And that was the total?
Well, that was the total. And then both programs for United Way and Health Net can fall underneath this new category, either a relief program setup, it'll be something brand new, like a capital account or just a, a contract for services.
And could you just, Al, I know that, that we had talked about this. The direction that the county was given from the state, could you clarify if that same direction is, goes to this municipalities also?
Right, so for, I guess, to kind of catch folks up in case they, they're not aware of the conversation that's going to happen. The Attorney General made a, made a ruling or an opinion that county boards cannot fund certain types of nonprofits. So the, the question that I have gotten from a number of folks, including many folks on the council, is, does that ruling apply to municipalities as well? And the answer is no. And the reason being is that county board budgets and, and their allocations are, are addressed in a separate section of state statutes than, than city municipalities are. But with that being said, the other part of that that is still somewhat concerning or alarming is the attorney, when, when asked, when the Attorney General was asked about, well, what about cities and villages? Basically, the answer was, I wasn't asked that question. So what I hear that as, I wasn't asked that question yet. So if somebody were to ask that question, and he was to opine on that, I, I think it's probably safe to assume that it would, that it would fall under the same auspices, because, you know, why would it be different from counties and cities? But, but, you know, I guess we'll cross that bridge if and when we get there.
Looking at the statute that was recommended, it's allowing counties to give money to nonprofits that provide specific services, but this includes assistance to senior citizens, historical societies, fairs, tourism attractions, and victims of domestic violence. Those are the ones that are approved to receive funding from the state through counties.
Was, was ours also included in that list?
Could you read it again, because we're having some interference?
The statute 59.
Okay. Looking it up, it says, "State statutes allow counties to give money to nonprofits that provide specific services, including assistance to senior citizens, historical societies, fairs, tourism attractions, and victims of domestic violence."
And see, now, both of these programs in which we're exploring provide services, but we've been giving them in lump sums, and then they do their operational capital. They, they do their own business, so that's kind of over.
So municipalities are, are specifically addressed in the statute that they can donate to those different categories, so it's actually.
Counties are.
Or counties.
Yeah, the municipalities are not addressed.
At all.
He's silent on municipalities in his, in his opinion.
But is there a, there isn't a statute then for?
No.
It says state statute, but it's like you said, towards counties. I think what I was trying to make is that you're trying to extrapolate what he's saying about counties and municipalities. When considering the nonprofits that have been brought forward, those that are historical societies providing assistance to senior citizens, et cetera, we have none that would be excluded from that list that I requested.
Right, yeah, if it, if it was apples to apples, I think is the point, yeah. And, and to, to your point, the statute that governs county boards is, is completely different than the statute that governs municipalities in, in terms of their, of what they can fund. So I've never, I've never read that portion of the state statutes as it pertains to municipalities. And if Mark was here, maybe he's never read it either. I, I don't know why he would, I guess, unless he gets asked this question. It may not outline anything like that at all.
And I just want to point out, as far as I'm concerned, these areas are, this is the quality of life that people in the city expect. And I think that as, us as the government officials, that we need to, we need to do what we can to enhance the quality of life and to continue it as best as we can.
And those were cities, not counties, that you were talking to?
Right.
So it seems like there's, depending on the city, people have different philosophies on, on how to, how to spend their money and their budget. Some are, we're not going to do anything for nonprofits, and some have a variation, if that's fair to say. And Ryan wanted to say something.
Add to what she's saying about those, talking about those cities. When we were at the League of Municipalities Conference, talking to a couple of different cities, all the ones I talked to all support, do stuff for the nonprofits, they donate money to nonprofits. One of the ones I talked to was like Madison, though. They, they actually allocate money to a committee who handles all the nonprofits, for example, so.
That Larry had brought up, yes.
My point to it, just that I'm not opposed to helping nonprofits. What I want to understand and make sure we all have an understanding of is a clear process that's, that's clear and fair and equitable to everyone.
And that's something that we've asked, I know that Ryan and I asked about also is, you know, can we, can we take a look at this at the beginning of the year and, and, and see if there's something else that we can do with this, so that it's, so that each year for budget, we already have something in place for a process.
Is there any further comments about the budget regarding capital requests, nonprofits, A or B?
Yeah, any, any, I guess, from, from staff's perspective, any direction that you can provide us in terms of A or B, and if B, what, where would you like to see that, those dollars go? I've heard a lot, I, I think I've kind of already heard that answer, but it may be. Well, I guess, I guess maybe if there's a differentiation of opinions from that, or, or maybe an affirmation. What I've heard is that it seems like the majority of folks are interested in Budget B, and there seems to be some interest in a capital replacement fund. So that's what I've heard so far. Dan, would you agree?
That's what I've heard, too.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll just make a motion that we go with Budget B, and that with that budget, we use the $30,000 for 700 what?
$30,784.
Can, can I just make a, a recommendation? Instead of saying, I make a motion to go with, can, maybe it's better to say, make a motion to direct staff to prepare, to prepare budget, a budget reflective of Budget B with the inclusion of the $30,784 as part of a capital replacement fund?
Yes, so moved.
Does anybody understand that motion?
I want to make it very, very clear that the budget is not approved and cannot be approved tonight. That, I just want to make sure that that's very, very, very clear.
Thank you for that correction.
To Becky. Yeah, yeah.
Second.
Okay, so everybody does, okay, we're going to have Inga read it back, and this is a motion regarding directing staff to prepare a final draft.
Yeah, to, well, yeah, to a budget, a budget to be brought forth for potential.
Resolution.
Yeah, a resolution to be brought forth for, for potential adoption on the 28th.
So we're not adopting a budget tonight? Got it, okay, all right. Inga?
So correct me if I'm wrong. Alderman, Alder, was. Alder Person Clark motioned to direct staff to prepare a budget reflective of Budget B with the inclusion of $30,784 for a capital improvement fund.
Yep, you can discuss. Yep, you can discuss.
Cool.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're just at least a sound zone. Does that make sense? I'm not saying it's part of the budget.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so I'll have to vote on that. And if you want to make another motion after that?
That's right.
To amend this?
Or?
Say it again, Dave, please, I'm sorry.
I say that's just, just to, for folk to understand, that's still with the twenty-one thousand dollars still in the budget for nonprofits.
Yes.
Well, we haven't decided that yet. That's just I didn't-
Right. Okay. All right. Any further questions on this specific amendment?
Motion.
Motion.
Okay, now, Dave has just confused me, because when I look at this paperwork, I'm seeing that B is, that leaves the nonprofit request as is.
Yes, he's just saying they're not approving it.
Right, right. Okay, I'm sorry, I, I couldn't hear him very well. Thank you.
Anything else?
Um, there's a motion and a second.
Favor? All those opposed?
Dave? Dave was in opposition.
Dave, you're in opposition?
I'm in opposition to leave it as is.
Okay, just-
Right, this is just, um, directing staff to prepare a, do you want to read it back, Inga?
Uh, motion to direct staff to prepare a budget reflective of budget B with the inclusion of thirty thousand, seven hundred eighty-four dollars for a capital improvement fund.
So it doesn't say anything, it's just looking at budget B and putting that money towards capital improvement?
It's using budget B as our primary for discussion.
I, I didn't want to identify yet how to use that thirty-three, thirty thousand dollars.
Oh, no, no.
So you, you won't have identified how to use that?
It's just going in the capital improvement fund at this point.
We're gonna create, we're gonna create a line item called capital improvement fund. Yeah, so-
I don't think he understands it.
Okay.
No, and then we'll do that second part, Dave.
Um, Dave, do you underst, did you understand that? And, because Teresa had a question. Okay, so Teresa-
Do you approve or no?
I'll go along with it.
So it's unanimous then? Okay, all right. Okay.
Is, is there, just so we're, just so we're clear, too, I guess, as part of that, is there, is there a general sentiment, one way or the other, in terms of the nonprofits? Does they, does, is, is there, is there a, a majority feeling to, to fully fund or not? Just because there's been a lot of discussion around it, or-
And I don't want to have to write up like three different resolutions with different allocations either.
Go ahead, Dave.
What I was getting at, let's get it straight now. So the N and L are doing three different documents. If you're fully funding, um, nonprofits, if that's left in there, my answer is no.
Can we do a second motion with the nonprofits, so that, since we, well, because we've already voted on the other one, right? We're done. We're, we're B and we're gonna, okay.
But, but you can, I, I mean, you can certainly make a second motion in regards to nonprofits.
Yeah, right. So we're just, went to B, essentially, and-
All right, then, I will make the motion that we continue to fund our nonprofits.
Second. Can, can I, can I suggest the motion say something to the effect of, make a motion to direct staff to prepare a budget for November twenty-eighth that includes the full, the fully funding of nonprofit requests?
So moved.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Doesn't define how you're gonna fund that.
As requested, um, as so, the Y gathering place and, um, and the Milton House, based on their requests. And then we had a second, right? Do we have a second? Okay, all right.
Discussion?
Discussion. And you can still, I mean, that's one way to fund nonprofits. You can also have motions to fund nonprofits, but fund them differently. So this is fully funded as they all have requested, the amount. Right, it's not to vote on the budget, but for staff to prepare a budget.
I'm okay with, I'm okay with that, with the caveat. And I know I've been harping on it, but with that caveat that we seriously do something for next year.
Which we already voted on to do that.
I know, and we did.
Yep.
And we directed staff, but I don't want to lose sight of that. Um, I do agree with Alderman Adams, and I agree with others who say we should fund, fully fund it. So I'm struggling between the two, to be honest with you.
Lucky you don't have to pass a budget tonight.
That's right, but I, but I'm on the fence, so, just so you all know that when it comes time for voting.
There might be a tie vote, thanks for the warning. I might be said, no. Ryan?
Personally, I think we should fully fund the, uh, all of the nonprofits. I think as far as, as I mentioned last week, I looked at our comprehensive plan, which is kind of our goals as a city, I guess, you could say. Uh, it kind of a direction to us as to how we need to look at driving the city forward. And all throughout that plan, are these non, uh, are these nonprofits mentioned quite often? Um, first of all, in our goals, number three on our goals for the city as a whole is to protect valuable historic resources that contribute to our unique character. Moving into that more, uh, in our strategic initiatives, our very first strategic initiative is to make Milton a destination. And going with that, when you go down into page forty-five of our, um, comprehensive plan, it brings up cultural resources. And as the very first cultural resource, it mentions the Milton House specifically. And it mentions our goal inside of cultural resources as a city are to celebrate historical and other cultural resources as key assets of Milton's character, which to me means that it's part of Milton as a city, um, itself. And therefore, I think that's something that should be funded in that sense, because it is part of Milton, and it's our, part of our identity and everything. Add into that, that's the cultural side of things. You also have the community facilities section, which mentions specifically the gathering place, as well as the YMCA. And the, the goal there is to maintain the city's high quality of life through access to a wide range of sustainable public services and facilities, which these prove to be, especially the gathering place has gone and provides so many services to the city as well. And one can't really think of much about what's going on in the city without thinking of the gathering place or the Milton House. They're both names that are heard throughout the whole city as a whole. And to me, that means that they're a big part of the Milton's identity as a whole and our identity. So I really do think that these need to be funded, even if it's for operational, because they are part of us as a whole, as a city.
Any other comments?
Just that, uh, you know, I don't dispute that we should, should be, uh, funding the, um, groups, the non, uh, the groups that we have talked about, but that I am opposed to funding them for the operational, uh, costs that they have applied for. And, you know, I've explained earlier that there are other ways to approach this, so.
Something I will also mention is, a lot of these organizations, they can get grants for doing special activities, but it's very hard to get money, I think, for operational expenses. So I think it's, to me, it's reasonable if they ask for operational expenses. And correct me if I'm wrong, Carrie, but getting grants for events and stuff is actually, I would say, a much easier task than trying to get something for operational expenses. And so-
Let's say easy, the very relative term.
It's a relative term. I'm not saying it's easy to get, because I know there's a lot of work involved, and you get, don't get a lot of them.
It would be the argument to, well, why don't you get grants? Which is something that's presented to every nonprofit, get a grant for it. Grants have to be event-focused, program-focused, and frankly, are competitive.
Right.
You're competing against twenty other nonprofits who also have the same-
And the Milton House goes for grants actively. I know that the Gathering Place, I believe, goes for grants actively, both through active fundraising to help cover their expenses as well. But a lot of that funding goes to their actual events or things like that. They don't necessarily have a lot of source of income when it comes to operational expenses. So I think that's the way that the city can actually help these organizations in the city, is to cover the operational side rather than events or big capital expenses, because there are more fundraising opportunities that can happen for those. It's harder to go and say, "I need money for operating expenses." It's a lot easier to say, "I need money to help rebuild this building or repair this building." So I actually think that it's better that we pay, that we assist in the operational side of things, because that's the one that's harder for them to be able to actually recoup.
Any other questions, any other comments on this motion?
One more from Larry.
Yeah, this is what we're here for.
When I did my document, you probably all saw that, the, and I bring it back to that, the primary purpose of a city council, or a town board, or a village, uh, group of trustees, is to ensure that needs are met in the community. Needs of, you know, safety, public health, um, et cetera. I, that's our primary purpose for existing. So for my, my dilemma is, when push comes to shove, the priority goes to the taking care of city services.
I think that priority is always there.
Well, yeah, not only is that priority alwa, always there, but then you also need to remember, too, that, I mean, we have people that rely on the meals at the gathering place. So I guess I consider that, and not only that, but they also offer immunizations and, um, checks, I don't, different kinds of physical checks. Um, I don't know if anybody else gets those things where you can have, pay a hundred dollars and they'll look at all of the veins in your body or whatever. Those things, those types of things happen at the gathering place. And it's specifically for those people that have those types of needs. Um, and I also would just like to add, too, that, um, the gathering place, um, does accommodate people with different types of disabilities, too. Um, and not just physical disabilities, also emotional disabilities. There's a sign right on the door, the entrance, that they welcome people with dementia. They're dementia-friendly. You know, you don't have that in a lot of places. I mean, I, I just wanted to point that out.
So we'll add one thing, though. We'll say, Larry, that it does also make sense to look at our process for this. So I do agree with the idea of, of looking at our process of how we, you know, fund nonprofits and stuff, but, um, I think it is something to continue to do. It doesn't hurt to look at our process. So I do agree with you on that.
Well, and I think, uh, you know, the public spoke quite loudly when they made our comprehensive plan, um, that these were things that they, that they valued and wanted, um, the city to somehow support. Now, I guess there's a, a debate on whether, does support mean financially, or, you know, how do you support that? But, um, we, we put forth a lot of effort to get community input on, on doing that comprehensive plan, and it's, we spent a lot of money on updating our comprehensive plan. So I like that, um, that Ryan referred back to our goals and our strategies with that, because I think that's something that a lot of communities sometimes put together, and then they put it aside. And it's meant to be a guide for how their city grows and what the future looks like. So, um, I would encourage everyone to look at that and, and be familiar with it, too.
And we also had a lot of people here at our last meeting, too, in support of the nonprofits.
Other part we have to remember is, the city does a lot of in-kind donations that are not, I mean, I think the nonprofit community needs to recognize the in-kind donations that this city makes to them for all of their events, supporting that, putting picnic tables, taking care of the garbage, um, um, parking lot renovation, all these kind of things. I mean, we're not, not helping people. So I, that's very important, because I've had people call me saying, "Well, Larry, you don't want to help people." That's not true.
Do we do the payroll for the gathering place?
Go ahead, Dave, I'm sorry.
I say we do the ga, uh, the payroll for the gathering place. We, uh, I'm not sure how much, I think we paid a good chunk of that parking lot, for the donos. I, I guess I, I don't want anybody to get the idea that I'm against it, and he's, I'm not. My, my problem is priorities. And when Larry laid out his, his, uh, deal or his process, he mentioned, "There's gonna be years when we don't have the money." I don't want this thing to be a, uh, laid-out in concrete thing that we're bound to do every year. And, and right now, to my way of looking, all the unfunded, uh, issues we've got, we don't have the money to give away. I don't have a problem with when we have all our stuff taken care of, and, and there's twenty thousand dollars sitting out there if they wanted to apply for. But to just automatically half the budget that every year, irregardless of what else is going on, to me, doesn't make sense.
Thank you, Dave. Is there any other questions or comments?
I just would like to comment that I can say for myself, in the time that I have served as a ci, city councilwoman, that there were many, many years that we did not do anything for our nonprofits. And what, I'm, as far as, as far as giving them money for, like Ryan said, operations or building repairs. And as a result of that, a lot of those, a lot of things got, you know, the, the buildings were worn and places were closed down, and Pete, there weren't people in the facilities to help, and then, you know, it's, it, it was very obvious. And as a matter of fact, I can, I can tell you that that's one of the main reasons that I've always been a supporter of the nonprofits, because I don't want to see these things go, I don't want to see the buildings collapsed and in need of repair, and I don't want to see empty parking lots. Um, I want to see people coming in and enjoying them, and more importantly so, I'd like to see the people in the city of Milton enjoying them. And I think that they do, because if they weren't enjoying them, then, well, they wouldn't be asking us to help support them.
Okay, I'm gonna call a question. All those in favor?
Do you want me to read it?
Yes.
Okay. After we read it.
Alder Person Clark motioned to direct staff to prepare a budget that includes fully funding nonprofit requests from the Gathering Place, Milton House Museum slash Milton Historical Society, and the YMCA of Northern Rock County. Alder Person Holbrook seconded.
Okay, so I'll just, uh, do a roll call vote. Linda?
Aye.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Teresa? No. Um, Larry?
opposed.
Thanks a lot. Aye, go ahead. Prepare the, prepare the document. I mean, you can all tie the vote up next week again, or- Okay. Anything else for, go to the order, I guess there's gonna be no team building tonight.
So with that, so with that being said, um, if there, I guess if there's no further discussion on it, what, what Dan and I and the rest of the, uh, staff will do is, we will prepare a budget resolution, uh, that reflects budget B with the, with, uh, with the additional dollars going to a capital improvement program. And, uh, it will have a, the budget will be prepared with the nonprofits being fully funded as they've requested. with the nonprofits being fully funded as they've requested. Right?
Got that.
So then we'll have that on the twenty-eighth. That'll be for, for adoption at that point. And, and just so folks are clear too, I'm sorry, I want to make this last point. If the, at that point, if the council wants to change the budget, they still can. It's not, it's, it's not as though whatever gets presented that night is what's adopted. You know, I, I don't, I don't want folks to think that. But we'll prepare a resolution with that information that sets the levy. And, yeah.
I think it's really good to note that we don't, it, it's a healthy council when you don't all agree. It's very important we all remember that. I mean, in the end, we're all focused on the right things. It's just that we have a different perspective on the issue.
As long as you don't fight in the parking lot.
Right.
So you're saying you want to do team building exercises? It's, we're, it's not on the agenda.
Sorry.
But we're going to spend a good hour on the twenty-eighth before we actually vote on the budget to do team building. We'll have a couple speakers. Um, general items?
I have a general item. I just would like to say that I and Anisa attended the ceremony for Veterans Day at both the park and over at the gathering place. It was very well-attended. There's actually seems to be an increase in veterans that, and their families that are coming, which I think is just great. The speaker was very informative. And I just, I just want to thank the gathering place for all the stuff that they did for that. And Dick, and Dick Frye, and Anisa, and it was just a wonderful thing.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Any other general items? All right, a motion, oh, okay, the next meeting, November twenty-eighth, seven, um, item ten, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, everyone.